Let us begin with a prayer. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord God, You created us, and You put Your law into our hearts. We thank You for helping us to know You, the origin of our lives. Help us with Your Spirit to cooperate and maintain that relationship that we have with You. Thank You for giving us Jesus Christ, who has left us this legacy of the heavenly lifestyle. Give us the courage to practice this lifestyle as a way of following Jesus Christ. And so we can marry to be called Your children always, even in this life, and also in the life to come when our life on earth is ended. And we make our prayers through Christ our Lord, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Okay, so welcome to this discussion or this talk about our Constitution, the Constitution of Christianity. And the Constitution of Christianity is, as we said last time, every Constitution talks about who the people are, who the people are, and what they are supposed to do. Who the people are and what they are supposed to do. What is their purpose on earth? Every Constitution describes the kind of people who, for whom the Constitution is written. So also for this, this Constitution for Christianity, in this Constitution, we learn who we are and what our purpose is, and what exactly are we supposed to be doing? Who we are. And we will hear a lot about it as we go through it. But last time, I told you that in every Constitution also, there is an introductory part, there's an introduction, and then there are the articles, and then there's a conclusion. So also in Jesus' Sermon on the Mount, there is an introduction, an introductory part, and then there is the main body of the Constitution. Basically, the introduction has, has, in every introduction, like introduction to books, when people write books, when you are able to read the introduction, you will pretty much get an overview of what the book is about. And especially, the main point, the thesis of the book is normally hidden somewhere in the introduction. So if you read the introduction very well, there is a place in the introduction, sometimes maybe a second paragraph or the third paragraph, where the author will come out and say, "In this book, I claim that A is B." Or "In this book, I contend," or "My claim is that A is B." And that is the main point. And that is the point that the author is going to break down in the rest of the book. And the conclusion is many times the restatement of the main thesis, the main claim. In another way, the conclusion just brings a different way of saying the same thing that the book is claiming. So books that are well-written and that have gone through research and that have been, gone through publishing houses with reputation. So I read books, normally I read books, when I'm going to read a book, I have to look at the publisher first. Because any book, anything can be written, like the internet right now, Wikipedia, people can write anything. And if it is not peer-reviewed, it is not really scrutinized, it will not be published. And with reputable publishing houses in the subject, there are certain publishers that publish well-researched religious material. And then others just don't care. So it is important to know who is a publisher too. If a book goes through a particular publisher that tells me, a publisher that I respect and I know, that gives me confidence that this thing has been researched and it's a good, good stuff, good material. It goes down to the situation. And so this is very important that we see the Constitution that way. So today, we are going to look at the introduction to the Constitution of Christianity. An introduction part, which is the preamble, the same thing, the preamble is the introduction part. That is what we call the Beatitudes. The Beatitudes are the introduction. So that is where we see the main point of the entire teaching of Jesus Christ, the entire Constitution. So when we finish with that, then we will start, continue with the sermon, and that will break it down, break many of the things that we say in the Beatitudes. It will be broken down in the rest of the sermon. So there's a few things we have to say before we begin to engage in the introduction. We have to say something about the Sermon on the Mount or the Constitution of Christianity and compare it with the Old Testament, the Old Testament's Constitution. Okay, so last time I compared, I compared our Constitution with the Constitution of the United States. Now I want you to compare the New Testament Constitution because the Sermon on the Mount is the Constitution in the New Testament. I want to compare that with the Old Testament Constitution. The Old Testament Constitution is, is, the hero of that Constitution is Moses, okay? The hero of the Old Testament Constitution is Moses. And Moses received the law on the mountain. So there's a lot of similarities between the Sermon on the Mount and the Ten Commandments, what we call the Ten Commandments, or is it Decalogue? The Ten Commandments is, the Ten Commandments form the introduction to the entire laws of the Old Testament. The Beatitudes form the introduction to the entire law of Jesus' Sermon on the Mount. So we want to make that comparison to show that Jesus Christ is the new person who has taken over, has taken over Moses, okay? Jesus is a new Moses. Jesus is a new law giver, okay? And so we move always, we shouldn't stop with Moses. When we read the law in Moses, we should look at the law, we should look at its correspondence, how it is taught by Jesus Christ. We always have to come to the New Testament. We are people of the New Testament. And that's why the title for this page is Covenant: Old vs. New. Testament is the same as covenant is the same as relationship, okay? So every relationship, every covenant is a relationship. So the old relationship, Moses was the one who received the law. That spells out the relationship between the people and God. But Jesus now is replacing Moses. And Jesus gives a new law. Also, the Old Testament was gotten from Mount Sinai, from a mountain, Sinai. Another name for Mount Sinai is Mount Horeb. They are the one and the same thing. Sinai and Horeb are the same mountain. Well, the Bible uses two names to refer to that mountain, okay? So also, Jesus went on the mount. The sermon was given on the mount. And this mountain, it is not named. The mountain in the New Testament was not named. But since He was in Galilee, you see the mountains that are on the western part of the, of the Sea of Galilee. That is where Jesus, we believe Jesus was and taught from. And when you stand on that mountain, I told you this some time ago, when you stand on that mountain, the Mount of the Beatitudes, you can see the sea. It's a very beautiful sight to stand in the mountain and be looking at the Sea of Galilee. And this is one of the reasons why we say Jesus' Sermon or the Beatitudes fulfill, they are like Moses' experience. Because they all talk about mountain. And in Matthew, mountain means, mountain is the place of God's home. Mountain is a place, they use the word mountain to signal a place of revelation. God always reveals something. God's action takes place on a mountain. And so that is why Jesus is found on a mountain. And then when you come down, in the old covenant, in the old relationships, there is what we call the Decalogue. The Decalogue, deca means ten, logos is a study or word. So the ten words, the ten words, logos, word, deca, ten. That's what we mean by the Ten Commandments. When we say the Ten Commandments, we also mean the ten laws or the ten words, okay? And that is found in Exodus, chapter 20, verse 1 through 17. So also you have the Beatitudes. But the Ten Commandments is not the only laws that were given to the Israelites. A lot, 613, I think, that had been counted by scholars, a lot of laws. But they start with this. The Decalogue is the beginning, is the introduction. So also, we are talking about the Sermon on the Mount. That is a long sermon, but the beginning is the Beatitude, Matthew, chapter 5, verse 1 through 12. So that is the link there. You got two introductions that we are looking at over here, okay? And then you go down and you see the rest of the laws are spelt out from Exodus, chapter 20, verse 22, all the way through chapter 23, verse 19. That's where you see different, a lot of laws that God gave to the Israelites, apart from the Ten Commandments. But these basically are explaining what the Ten Commandments are. Their explanation. They go a little deeper into what the Ten Commandments mean. So also in a sermon from verses 13, Matthew 5, 13, all the way through chapter 7, verse 27, you find the rest of the sermon. That's where Jesus is talking about all kinds of things, from marriage to anger to all kinds of things that come into our lives, how we are supposed to behave with anger, with marriage, with divorce, with all kinds of situations. And we're going to see all of them. And then some of the characteristics that we have seen is that in the old relationship with God, the laws are decrees. They are like top-down, top-down, and pushed and impressed upon us. And then there are punishments that are spelt out. Some of them are violent punishments if you break the law. And that puts like lack of fear. The old law is like, it's like, "You gotta be afraid, afraid." It's like you're bound. It's like a top-down kind of relationship, okay? But in the new, in Jesus' giving of the law, it's more of explanation. It's more of persuasion, more of calling. And then there's blessings. There are blessings that accompany, that you are giving, you are shown blessings, right? You are shown blessings that will make you fall in love and come. And also, you are given the opportunity to use your own mind and choosing. That's very important as a difference. So if you look at the top, before I move from this part, if you look at the top again, you see Old Testament law is letter. It's a letter. It is the promise. The letter of the law is what was given. In the New Testament, it is the spirit of the law and the fulfillment of the law that is targeted, okay? All right, so that's one comparison. Now let us compare, we keep going on. Let us compare what the Catholic Church, our church, has done with the Ten Commandments, okay? Let's compare that because we have that in our Catholic catechism and we teach our children as a matter of preparing them to later on in their lives, look at the Beatitude, to look at the Beatitude. So this is where we all started. We all learned the Ten Commandments. But the Catholic Church gave us the way to learn the Ten Commandments, the way to learn it. Everything is the same, but there's a little change. And that change tells us how the Catholic Church was looking at the Ten Commandments. So the first one, in the Old Testament, it says, the first commandment was, "One God, no idols." And that corresponds exactly with the Catholic catechism. Also, "One God, no idols." The second one is, "No images of God, no representations of God." And yes, in number two, also in the Catholic catechism, "No images of God." "No abuse," number three, "No abuse of God's name." "No taking God's name in vain." And there, the Catholic Church gave, rather, the Catholic Church's third one is, "Honor the day of the Lord." Not the same thing, right? "Honor the day of the Lord." And then, so abuse God's name, the day of the Lord is considered sacred to God. So the Catholic Church uses the day of the Lord instead. And remember also, the Catholic Church was at this point trying to, not the Sabbath, but the resurrection day, the resurrection day. So the Catholic Church was actually up to something here to try to let churchgoers look at the day, the Sunday, as the day of the resurrection and honor it. And then number four, you have the honor the day of the Lord, which is the fourth one here. But over here is honor your parents, okay? So the Church has honored parents. And then the fifth, so this is where you get the imbalance here. The fifth has honor your parents instead, and then the Church wants to "don't kill." Then the sixth, in the Old Testament is "don't kill," and the Church is "don't commit adultery." And then you go on, "Don't commit adultery," and the Church has "don't steal." Then you go "don't steal," the Church has "no false witness, no lies." And then the ninth one is "no false witness," in the Old Testament, "no lies." And the Church has "don't desire your neighbor's wife." And then the tenth commandment was, "Don't desire neighbor's wife," or "Don't covet neighbor's wife and property." So this is where we had a, this is why the Church changed these things. Because the Old Testament put wife and properties together. Wives were considered part of property, okay? They were, they were put in the same category and the Church wanted to split that, split, split the wife and property because wife is not, I mean, this is basically male. It's a male writing. I told you one time that in the Old Testament, the male domination was very, very clear. The male, everything was done for the male. The male is, God is our Father. And mothers are not talked about much. You know Jacob's children, they are sons. The 12 tribes of Israel are made of Jacob's sons, not daughters, okay? So we only talk about 12 children of Jacob whilst there is a daughter. So the Catholic Church split, already split the tenth, the tenth commandment into a midwife, a more, made wife a separate thing by itself because a wife is not, cannot be lumped with property. And so that's where they changed the whole arrangement in the Catholic catechism. A time is coming that we're going to have to change again because that one was good until our times. A time is coming, we don't have to do even wife only, but we have to do spouse rather than wife, okay? It has to be equal because if a man can divorce, well, a woman should be able to divorce too. It doesn't have to go in one direction, okay? So a time is coming, we have to change our language too. The Catholic catechism has to be rearranged again. Okay, so I just keep, make you see this because some people think that what is written in the Bible exactly is what we have in the Catholic catechism. No, the Church has the right to continue to interpret, interpret the scriptures and then represent it in a way that gives really life to our modern-day people, okay? So the Church has all the right to teach what is in the scripture because the Church wrote the scriptures anyway. The New Testament was written by the Church. People from the Christian community wrote the New Testament, okay? And they are the, and people in the Jewish religion also wrote their testament. They didn't, they are not things that fell from the sky, okay? They were ideas that were written. They had a right to put down what they think God is telling them. So that is the little comparison I want to make over there. Now, let's go back to the Constitution and then now see what we are going to study. So we are going to study today the preamble. That's what we have there, the Beatitudes from Matthew, chapter 5, verse 1 through 12. That's what we're going to do today. Then, as we come back next time, we will begin to study the sermon, the articles, the rest of the sermon, when it breaking down, from verse 13, from verse 13. Matthew, chapter 5, from verse 13. That's when we begin to talk about the articles. And it will go from chapter 5, verse 13, through chapter 7, verse 27, okay? And we have Luke's counterpart, Luke's version of that sermon. So one of the things we'll be looking at, these are the things, I gave you this, we're going to go through this quickly. I'm just going to mention them, the things we are going to talk about which are going to form part of the Christian life. The salt of the earth and light of the world, we're going to talk about that. What does Jesus mean by that? We're going to talk about the law and the prophets. The law and the prophets. The law and the prophets is a phrase that is normally, that normally refers to the Old Testament, okay? The law and the prophet, that's the division of the Old Testament. You have the law, the Torah, the five books of Moses, Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, Deuteronomy. That's the law, okay? The prophets are the prophetic books. Isaiah and all those, and these are prophetic books. And then the rest are history, what we call the writings, okay? So whenever somebody mentions the law and the prophets, they are talking about the Old Testament, okay? So Jesus will tell us how we should relate, how we should use the Old Testament. Our Christians are supposed to use the Old Testament because our testament is the New Testament. Now how do we relate with the earlier, earlier version of the law? Do we throw it away or do we do something with it? He will tell you, "We don't throw it away, but how we use it is also very important." Okay, so then we go on. Jesus will talk about anger, how we use anger, what we should understand by anger. Then Jesus will talk about chastity of mind and body, chastity of mind and body. Everyone is called to live a chastised life. Everyone, it's not just religious or priests who are called to live a chastised, everyone's chastity is faithfulness. Chaste, to be chaste means to be faithful. So if you are married, you are faithful to your marriage, you are chased. If you are unmarried, you are chased to their way of life too. You have to be chased to that. You have to be faithful to that, okay? So then divorce, what do we do with that? What is, all these are human situations, human things. And Christians are not spared from having to confront things like that. So we're going to, Jesus teaches about that. Making oaths. When we are taking oaths, what do we do with them? What should be our attitude to taking oath and making oaths? The law of Talion is the law of eye for an eye and tooth for a tooth, okay? Like, if you do something to me, something against me, what should I do as a Christian? What should I do, okay? You see that law in the Old Testament is like, "Do the same thing." Do the same thing to the person. We'll see what Jesus teaches about that. And then we'll see, how about enemies? Christians have, and there are people who hate Christians. How do we deal with people who hate us, okay? Do we hate them back? Or what do we do with such situations? Those are the things that we have to talk about. And then purity of intention, what does that mean? What is purity of intention? Is it just a sexual issue, sexual matters? A lot of people just get stuck. It's one of it, it's one of it. Sexual intention or intention to do something sexual. But that is not the only, that is not the, it's just one. There are a lot of impure thoughts. What is a impure thought? It's not only sexual. And not all sexual thoughts are impure. Sexuality is a beautiful thing that God created for humanity. So there are good sexual thoughts and, 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 and there are bad ones, yes. But, but in our world today, everybody, I hear that many times. When people, people come to confession, "I have impure thoughts." And they mean, what, all that they mean is they have sexual intentions or sexual thoughts. That is not the only impure thought. If you are thinking about someone in a negative way, could be, is also an impure thought, yeah? So we'll look at that. And then the almsgiving, what do we do with charities? Charity and corporal works. The Church, the Church's teaching about almsgiving is what we call the corporal works of mercy. Corporal works of, bodily, corpora, corpora, bodily works of mercy. Then there's another thing called spiritual works of mercy that has to do with, with teaching and praying and things like that. That are more intentions. And then we have prayer. What is Jesus, we talked about prayer already before, but then here we get, we get an explanation from Jesus. And then fasting, detachment, anxiety. What do we do with that? All these things, just because you are baptized Christian, doesn't mean that you can't, you don't, you'll get a break from some of these things. All these things will come into your life. But how you deal with it, how you deal with it is what is the living of Christian life. Being a Christian doesn't mean that you won't, you won't go through adversity and confusion and, the Church is not going to, I mean, we are having problems with the Church uniting people, the people who are left. the church is not gonna, I, I mean, we are having problems with the church uniting people, the people who are uh left and right and, and front and center and all that kind of thing where that we have made our church to be. It's not a, they, 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 those things themselves are not the problem. How we remain faithful Christians, even though we're going through that. That's what they, how we negotiate our lives through them. So, so fasting, detachment, and anxiety. And then we'll talk about judging, what do we do with that? Judgment, judging people. Uh, what do we do with power of prayer, uh, the, the meaning and power of prayer? So you got two, two, two times when Jesus uh talks about prayer. That's how important this action of a Christian is. Then the golden rule, uh, how do we look at the golden rule? Is it enough just to uh 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 do good to people, uh, what you want people to do to you? Is it, is that enough? Or is there something deeper? And then the virtue and its obstacles. Uh, so, so Jesus tells us how, um, every virtue, if you say you have a virtue, you are not going to just exercise it freely, it's not going to be rosy, you are going to get a pushback always. That's how it's tested. If you say you have a virtue, well, there will be a test for that virtue. And then there's a conclusion to the sermon that we will look at. So hopefully that will exhaust us through the Lenten season, okay? By looking at uh the Constitution. So now let us go take our, our topic for uh today, which is, we, we have been hitting about this at certain times already. So uh uh studying that text is, is easy. The, the, the text is Matthew chapter five verse one through twelve, okay? This is the introduction, this is the preamble uh of the Constitution of Christianity. Uh, verses one through uh two, verses one and two are an introduction to this too. It talks about uh what Jesus did, the preparatory things. It says, Jesus uh had the crowd came to Jesus, and he went up the mountain, and he sat down. All those uh look like something very close to how a lawgiver gives laws. Uh, a lawgiver sits down, and, and the mountain is a very important thing. He went on a mountain because, because he, he wants to do something solemn, solemn, the solemnity of it, okay? And in a Jewish setup, a, a teacher normally sits down on a bench, and, and he, his uh uh students or, or learners sit around, they sit all around, but he sits on a bench and, and instructs them. It's a popular scene for a classroom, and that is why this sermon is not just a sermon, it's not a preaching, it's more a teaching. Jesus was actually teaching uh uh in this part. So then they, they started talking about, um, from verse three, we start looking at the, the Beatitudes, the teachings, the blessings, okay? So the first one is uh the poor in spirit, okay? Say blessed are the poor in spirit. Understand that when he said blessed are somebody, blessed are these people, he's calling, calling on us to adopt that lifestyle, to be poor in spirit, okay? To be poor in spirit. Uh, poor in spirit is something you would like to be. It is, it is not the poverty that we know, it's not materially poor. Uh, there are a group of people who, who uh recognize the kingdom of God. The people who recognize the kingdom of God, who know their need for the kingdom of God. It doesn't matter who they are, it doesn't matter what they have, they were called the, the Anawim of God. The Anawim of God are people who recognize their need for God's kingdom, for godly lifestyle, for godly teaching. And, and I might say that, that uh, uh, that is what I, 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 I like too. I want, no matter what I have, I still, I still need to, to, to learn. I still, I still need to, to, to learn more, more wisdom, to learn more va- values and virtues. That's, that's, that's Anawim. And there's no day that you can say that you are totally uh sufficient. The Anawim are, the, the poor are, are in spirit. Matthew says poor in spirit, Luke only says the poor. But Matthew says poor in spirit in order to, to actually deepen what we are talking about here. That is not, it's not material uh poverty. And so uh, uh, then, then we move on to uh uh those who mourn. Those who mourn, the mourning here is not a mourning of the death of a, a loved one. Is that a mourning of, it's a death of, the death of the same thing that we are talking about. It's the death of God's presence, the lack of God's presence, the lack of God's uh godly ways, the lack of goodness and the, the presence of imperfections. That's what you're, you're mourning, you're mourning uh the lack of goodness in, in our lives. And that's one of the reasons why we fast. Fasting, uh, remember, remember the story about the bridegroom when Jesus told them, when we talked about fasting some time ago, about a cou- couple of weeks ago. They asked Jesus, the disciples of John the Baptist and the disciples of the Pharisees fast, but Jesus's disciples do not fast. Why? Why were they not fasting? And Jesus told them, can the wedding guests fast whilst the bridegroom is with them? Because the bridegroom is, when the bridegroom is present, that's a cause for celebration, okay? That's the time the marriage takes place. So, and Jesus compared himself to the bridegroom, and so they are with the bridegroom, so they don't need to fast. They got the thing that, the reason why they will have to fast is with them, so they don't have to fast, okay? So what is, is not telling us whether to fast or not to fast, but what is important here is why do you fast? What are you, when you fast, when you mourn, uh, what are you mourning? Are you mourning just a physical presence? Or you're mourning uh uh goodness, kindness, generosity? Those things are the one, the reason why you fast. So when you fast, you want to make room to get more of those, get more of Jesus, okay? So this mourning is not a mourning of uh the death of a loved one. All of us are going to experience the death of a loved one, we're all going to die too. So that is not the point here. The point here is more about values, the goodness, okay? Jesus, the kingdom of heaven, that's what we're looking for, perfection of the world. So then they can, we'll go to in verse five, it talks about the meek, blessed are the meek. The meek are, are people who are uh, who are the same as the Anawim, but explained differently. They are people who are uh accept the worth of other people, they are people of humility. They are people who are not uh, who don't consider themselves as, as uh um entitled, entitled in society. These are people who, who know that they don't have it all. And so there's somebody who has something that they can, they can, they can be aware of and they can relate with. The meek are people who know that they are not in the world alone, but that there's somebody, and that person, whatever I do can affect that person. I can't make a decision only just for myself and, and enjoy everything. No, when I'm making any decision at all, even a decision sometimes you make in your room alone, you have to find out, how does that affect somebody out there apart from me? And I don't care who the person is, it can be your spouse, who is in the same room, it is not you. When it comes to that, yeah, we say the two are one, yes, the two are one, but we are talking about individuals now. The decisions you make by yourself can affect your spouse, your children, your family, extended family, your nation, your church, uh, people, it can affect people out there. So you have to think about them whenever you are thinking about you, okay? So the meek are the people who, who, who are, uh, and so because they are, they are humble, they are gentle, they are patient, they can wait, they can really, really wait, and they don't, they don't rush to judgment, okay? And then you have the hunger and thirst for righteousness. This is where I, I, uh, this is where we are taking part of our scripture text for our mission. See that our theme for our Lenten Easter season, it did not just fall from the sky. It is biblical, it is from the Bible. We have to hu- be hungry, we have to be thirsting. When we say my soul is thirsting for justice, that's what we mean. Righteousness is the same word of, as justice. It is interpreted in the Hebrew, it's, it's interpreted as the, uh, in the Old Testament, uh righteousness is, is sadek, uh, sadek. But in the New Testament, which is written in Greek, the Greek was dekaesune, okay? Dekaesune means justice, okay? So it's the same word, justice in the Bible is the same as righteousness, uh, too. And righteousness and justice has to do with bridging, bridging the gap between where, what I, what, what I'm doing right now and what Jesus will do, okay? Many times we don't measure up, but we have to be closing the gap. So making right is bringing my actions close to Jesus's action, to make it look a little bit more like Jesus, okay? So that's, that's righteousness, and, and, and it's something that we have to hunger and thirst for, because we usually will not get it, like when Jesus says, be perfect as your heavenly Father is perfect. It doesn't mean that you can catch up with God, you cannot catch up with God's profession, but it is, it is still good to be hungering and thirsting for it, and that's our lifestyle. That being hungry and being thirsty itself is the lifestyle. It is not any like accomplish something, we can never accomplish it, we can never finish. Hungering and thirsting for righteousness. So it's a very important uh concept uh in our faith. It means that to, to, to be walking, to be going is the real deal, is the life of, is the Christian life. We are seeking people, we will always be seeking, we shouldn't stop seeking and thirsting. And, and then you go to the, the next one is uh uh mercy. People who do, uh, who, who are merciful, who forgive, uh, uh, and, and who are merciful, people who are merciful are people who, who release other people, okay? People who do not ho- hold the law, uh, to be merciful here is to be merciful to release people, not just from debt, uh, they may be, uh, or they do something wrong against you. No, it is also how you apply, how you look at laws as it applies to people. Sometimes we don't see the law applying to ourselves the way we see the law apply to other people. Many times like, oh, the church teaches that, oh, Lord, the church teaches that, and he did that, oh, he's so bad, oh, so bad. We never look at the law uh uh i- in application to us. The way we judge people with the law, I mean, we, we think that we know the law very well, and so we hold the people to the standard so strictly, that's being unmerciful. That's part of being unmerciful, uh, uh, because God, God is all merciful. God is more merciful, and that's what it should be anyway. But the way, the way sometimes we Christians, sometimes the way we look, look, use our own law and standards and, and, and judge other people with it, we are so, we are no mercy at all. We hold people, we're like, no! That's, that's what this, this is. Jesus is asking us to be like God a little bit, and, and see how God gives us a break. God gives us a lot of breaks. Some people think that God is like that old, old man with a, with a long white beard and like a stick to whack you anytime you do anything wrong. And we make that sometime, and there are many people also who are living under that understanding. They have an unmerciful, a very vicious God, a God who is a, 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 a God who is a, a how do we say that? People who like uh tit for tat, like uh uh, forgetting the word for, for, for that. Uh, a God who will automatically whack you when you do something wrong, and, and no patience at all, and vindictive, yeah, vindictive God, huh? A God who, that's, that's what we, but that is what we human beings do. And so sometimes we trans, uh, we, we project that onto God. We think that God is like that, and we hold that idea of God, that idea uh turns around to oppress us. There are some people who are living under, they are tense, so tense. Christianity is not tension. Christianity, Christianity is, gives us an idea of God who is, come on here, everybody, come on! God is not somebody that, when you go into the church, don't do like, ooh, God is, if I don't turn to you, God is gonna whack me, or, or, no! Be associating, uh, God is in the people that you are talking to, okay? So this, this thing is very important, it's a spiritual thing more than, more than just a physical thing. It is the way we see God as merciful, and we can also be merciful to other people, to conditions, to be patient with people and, and, and allow them also to learn. Then in verse eight, we talk about the clean of heart, the clean of heart, or the pure of heart. And I, I mentioned this a, a while ago about purity of intention. The pure, pure of heart, the pure of heart are, uh, again, I want to emphasize, is not, is not what many people have made it to be, to be sexual uh uh thoughts. That is not, uh, 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 a husband uh uh is, is allowed to have sexual thoughts towards the, the wife, a wife who has sexual thoughts toward the husband. There's nothing wrong about that, nothing impure about sexuality. But this is more about, about what is in your action must be the same thing in your heart, that's what this is about. Let your yes be yes, and your no be no, that's what Jesus meant over there. That my action and my thoughts and my heart, what is in my heart, correspond to each other. There is nothing duplicity, no duplicity, no deception. You can be doing one thing and your mind is somewhere, okay? So, so what you believe in God always, uh, that, that kind of truth telling, that not bearing false witnesses, when you go to, when you go to the Old Testament, it to tell you, that's how you not bear false witness, okay? No false witness, no, no lying, yeah, no lying. Uh, so what is in your mind, in your heart, and you bring that into anywhere you find yourself. That's the, that's what we are, openness in deeds and in, in intention. That's what uh, that's what pure, pure, and, and the word that comes to mind is integrity, integrity. In, in, integral, that, that everything matches. That's what, what clean of heart is. Then peacemakers, uh, in peace making, the Then peacemakers, in peacemaking, the peace that is talked about here is the Hebrew word shalom is much deeper than what many times we think about peace. The Hebrew word shalom is a gift of God, it comes from God. It's God's gift that is given to people. So it is something that is an outcome rather than you cannot do the peace. But you do something that leads to peace. Okay, so in peacemakers, to be a peacemaker is to practice the things that releases God's gift of peace. God's peace is, that's why we always say, may he rest in peace. Rest in God's peace, because it's not, peace is not ours. But we make something. And the thing that we do to do that, like Pope John Paul the Second would tell us, if you want peace, do justice. So what we do is justice, okay? We practice justice and peace becomes an outcome of that. God blesses us with peace. And if you notice, all the things, let me say blessed are these people. Why? Because God will do something for them. Okay, it's always passive, the second part of the Beatitude is a passive thing. They say blessed are the peacemakers for they will inherit, no, blessed, yeah, they will inherit the land. The peacemaking people will be the ones who will be given the land to dwell on. Blessed are those who are persecuted for the sake of righteousness. Again, you see righteousness coming back again and again and again and again, which means that the word justice is all over in the Bible. Justice is the same as righteousness, it is related to peace. But now we can see it again also, persecuted for righteousness sake. This talks more about the people that Matthew is telling us Jesus is talking to. Those people are people who were not let go for their joining Jesus. When you join Jesus' company, you become labeled in the Jewish community. If you join Jesus' community, you become labeled by the ninety-five percent of the Jewish community that did not see this man as the Messiah. So that is already there, that they're going to hunt you down, you are going to be a target. They're going to hunt you down by the ninety-five percent. And for that matter, Jesus was teaching them how to handle that. Okay, that they, how to stand firm. How to stand firm in that particular situation is what this Beatitude talks about. People who are hunted down, not just, if you're hunted down because you did something wrong, yeah, that, you're on your own. Okay, but you should be hunted down for the sake of righteousness, for the sake of joining me. Then it makes sense to be able to bear that. Now, I just want to say one thing about the Beatitudes. Do not try to practice all of them, all the eight Beatitudes. Try to, I want to do this, I want to practice, I want to practice. Do not try to do that. If you try that, you will lose all of them, you will never be able to keep it together. Okay, instead, the way the Beatitudes, as you were talking about it, you saw they are interlinked. In fact, they are, they are, they all boil down to one and the same thing. They are all the lifestyle of Jesus. This is Jesus' own lifestyle, Jesus' characteristics, okay? This is Jesus' lifestyle. So if you take one, take one and develop it in your life and focus on it, laser focus on that. Let's say you are going to practice peacemaking, that's going to be your stick. That's going to be what you want, that's going to be your entryway into the life of Jesus. This is mine, this is my key. But pray over it first, don't just blindly choose one. Pray over it, weigh them down, study them, read them again, read that text. And then, and then find out which one really touches you and which one really appeals to you. And when you find that, read more about it. I can tell you, you can Google it, you can Google that word. Find out what it means in the secular world and then find out what it means in the religious world. Read the Catholic Catholicism, read every other biblical text that relates to that. Talk with a priest. Do, find out the ways that you can practically put it into practice. And that is how you get them all. Find one, you will see that when you're practicing that one, you cannot be a peacemaking person if you are not telling the truth. It just will not happen. If you practice making peace, you have to necessarily tell the truth. If you try to practice peace and you are not telling the truth, there are going to be peace, that whole thing, that whole house is going to fall down. Okay, so that's what these things are, they are linked. So just choose one, or for the overachievers, choose two. But don't try to hold all of them together, you will lose them. You will be confused and they will not make any sense. Okay, so this is where I stop and Yes. Why does the Catholic Church not include in the Ten Commandments, that shall not take the name of the Lord God in vain? Well, so as I told you, making oaths is that same thing, it's just spelled in different words. But making oath is that swearing. when you look at also, I mean, another way, another way to guarantee that that is already implied is the Sabbath, is the Sabbath. The Sabbath, everything that has to do with God. So the important thing about the Ten Commandments is that there are two tables. There is the table, there is the laws that have to do with your vertical relationship with God. Okay, vertical relationship with God. And everything that the church teaches there includes, includes everything that the Old Testament teaches. The fact that it don't mention the name of the Lord in vain is explained in a different way of, like no making images of God, don't abuse God's day, everything that is godly, you don't respect everything that is godly. That already is taken care of, it's not a big issue for people who live in today's world. It was a big issue for them in those days. The Jewish people, for instance, the Jewish people will not mention God's name. You cannot mention God's name. Okay, but in the new law, in the New Testament, you can, you can call God. And if you're afraid, there are people who are afraid, oh my God. If you're afraid and you call God, it is because this is, this is the way, this is the way that comes to you. Like a child gets into trouble, say mommy, because this is the only, this is a bond. So automatically, when the child is afraid, the first thing that he looks for is a mom. So an explanation makes us know what we should spell out the same way and what we should modify to make everything complete. So, any other question? So we will go on with our study, we'll go with the articles from chapter five, verses thirteen. Especially the image of salt and light, salt and light. You are the salt of the earth, you are the light of the world. Okay, read that text and keep thinking about it and we will discuss that next week. Well, may God bless all of you and I want to ask you, I want to ask you, I want to ask you to come to, if you have the time tomorrow at seven P M. You are welcome to watch, to sign on and we'll be talking about the biblical roots of justice. And we're going to take more texts and look at the fact that the word justice is no longer a political word. Whatever it means in politics, we are going to look at the fact that the word justice is a religious word, that the political word has changed. Okay, so I look forward to seeing you, many of you there tomorrow. God bless you. Yeah, yeah, have a good night.